Which will be paid by, and the other half which uh paid by Interpol. Specific questions?
Any questions?
No, I think it's great.
I see a motion to do this, is that correct?
And again, this by looting guarantees that we're going to get this money, but these are just applications that have gone into the process and have a resolution in support by the local legislative body in terms of the score and moves the project on, so positive consideration, affirmative consideration is appreciated in all four of those before your time.
Alright, very good. Can you understand? I move this on the road, Mr. Mayor. Second by this.
The CFA?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Alright, I'll pay for the say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Poser, can we just have, would you mind shutting that air conditioner off? I don't think they can hear us over there.
Okay, uh the transfer of one twenty-nine Prospect Street to the Capital Region Landbank, and this is uh Mr. Panzini?
Uh, pretty simple request, the land bank just request some state control of the property to uh further redevelopment and reuse of the parcel.
Alright, any questions on?
I just, which one is one twenty-nine, is it the single family house?
Yes.
The two house, I grew up right across streets.
I move this, is there no discussion?
I want to let Mr. Portville sign back in here. We'll just discuss some of that. Prospect Street, okay, go ahead. Alright, so I'll move by Mr. Mayor, second by Mr. Portville, I'll pay for the say aye.
Aye.
And we have um items three through seven, which are going to be on the executive session, so I have a motion to release us, I'm ready, please.
So.
There, Mr. Portville, I'll pay for the say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and we are leaving, so.
Okay, call order of housing recreation, you first item on the agenda, uh, those connecting, the premises connecting municipal golf course, Mr. Wahi.
Hello. So, as some of you are aware, several months ago, we put out a public bid for improvements to uh State Municipal Golf Course, or Muni as it's known. Uh, the improvements are the first phase of our master plan. They are what I would say necessary base level improvements. Uh, they are for tee boxes, drainage, grading, um, some of the things. We have an extremely uh popular course, we do around fifty thousand rounds a year because of that, we get a lot of play, we have a lot of wear on the courses, and uh this is to expand our tee boxes, improve some of our grading and drainage, help some of the areas. So, uh, that was what this is, so we bid this, uh, we did review the bid extensively, and uh we're here to recommend award to the low bidder, which was Intergolf. Intergolf?
Uh, question?
Yeah. How many bids uh did we receive?
We received five bids.
Was it in a packet?
No, it's not in a packet.
Not in a packet.
Yeah, that's right.
I have the same questions.
Yeah, it would be nice if you could send us the entire package, so we could have a look at it.
So there were five bids, did you have a question?
Five bids, correct. I was unaware it wasn't in there, that's usually what we do.
No, it's not.
There was confusion on this right up until Friday noon time, on whether it was going to go up on the agenda.
Chris, do you have the summary package?
I have, this is my package of notes, I have the bid results um here, this is the, you know, this was, this is my notes on it with our golf course balances and things and the bid results. Uh, this is usually what you're accustomed to seeing, so full disclosure, I will.
Well, we can get a, we can make copies of that right now.
Yeah, sure.
I was just going to ask if anyone was local versus where Intergolf was.
Intergolf is uh New York State based, however, the in, the uh, the issue with this particular project was experience, and with regards to golf courses, we put in there a kind of a high level of experience, uh multi-year, dealing with golf course grading and drainage, not just common grading and drainage, just because of the type of project it was. So we did not get a lot of very local firms. We did have uh one that was in Glen's Falls, they uh, they weren't uh, they were, I think, third, uh, the second one was uh national. The two top firms are actually international firms, they do a lot of work both uh in the United States and in Europe. One of the things that you'll notice however, and this is why I kinda wanted to have information, I'm sorry you didn't, is there is a large discrepancy between the bait, the first bidder and the second bidder, and that is why we awarded, we did the bids two months ago, and we're only here even now. And the reason that we did that is we spent quite a bit of time contacting them, kind of besting out what the issues were, what went, uh, what the differences were, and kind of going through that process, so that's why I wanted to make sure that we had kind of all of our, our, our information when we came up here. Because it's usually a turnaround for a bid to an award is much quicker.
So the funding for this project, uh, is coming from the golf fund?
Uh, it's, it is from a, yeah, it's from a fund set up for the golf, yes.
And what were, was this the dollar amount we were looking to spend, Chris, or what was our ballpark, do we have any idea what we're looking to spend, and is this below the bid?
Yeah, no, I got it, so we set up, we set up a capital project, uh, we funded it to the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, actually, no, seven hundred thousand dollars, that was a couple of years ago. We did the tree work, that was actually the first phases, was to do all the tree work because we wanted to do that separate, we did that in the winter, two phases if you recall, we did a hundred trees uh last winter, we did a hundred trees this year, uh, the improvements of that, so now we're left with a balance in that of six hundred and twenty. Um, the base bid that we got for this project was five hundred, uh, five hundred something?
Seven.
Yeah, so that is below that, so we're, with the, with that bid, we are, we are in good shape, we are, and that's what, the whole master plan, if you recall, the whole master plan was a multimillion dollar plan, and what we did is we sat down with our consultants and we evaluated our needs, and we broke it into smaller projects that addressed our needs. So our needs are grading and drainage, tees, trees, so this addresses the core needs.
Is he just waiting for his comments?
Yeah. We, we are having a good year at the golf course.
You have a good year.
Yes.
Using a lot of water?
Uh, we don't use as much water as you think because our irrigation system is eighty, some years old, so we do use as much as we can, but it's a old system, so you'll see, if you go out on the course, you will see areas that are old ground, just because we're a single-headed unit that was original to the course nineteen thirty-five. So, and the uh.
On a commercial break.
Yes.
He's chiseling them out, chiseling those copies out.
Thank you. So just so you see, the two low bids, uh, were number two and then number one, so there is two pages, but the, the next page, those are considerably higher. As you can see, the, the local company was the VMJR in Glen's Falls, uh, a lot of them were northeast. The other thing that you uh, you'll notice is that because of the relatively small scale of our project being just drainage and drainage and tee boxes, um, it wasn't big enough to entice those from the Carolinas and Florida and those areas, those are the ones that uh, the economy actually is up for golf course renovations, it's not up for new courses, but renovations, the economy is supporting new course renovations, so since this wasn't a seven finger project, we didn't really pull from the south, we kinda just pulled from the northeast, but that's what we expected.
So now I do have several questions, man, you said you really flushed this out, and there's, there's discrepancy between all these whole improvements is, is incredible, I mean, going from one that's saying it's twenty-three thousand to forty-four thousand and eighteen hundred, so there are doing the work that you're requesting, right, I mean, what made these prices so different, Chris, I mean, what is your?
There was a miss in the base estimate on their part.
On their part, they missed it?
Correct.
So, are they gonna do the work with this price?
We've reached out to them several times, we have things in emails, I've had phone calls with them, and they said that they will honor this price, and they're doing a lot of work internationally, they wanna get back into the domestic market of work, um, and that they would honor this price, because this was the reason that if we had this delay.
Those numbers are just way off. So, have they, these folks, what other golf courses have these folks worked on, what's their credentials, what's their background, Chris?
They've worked on the Liberty National Course, uh, that's in New Jersey, the Trump Course, they have worked in Saratoga.
She doesn't have that.
They've uh, they've, they've worked on a Saratoga Lake Course, they've worked on a course in Connecticut whose name escaped me, I did call their references, and their references all said that they did very, very good work, um, but, I mean, this is, this is the reason that we got kind of caught up, was that, just to make sure that they would honor their bid, because we don't wanna get into a situation where, but this is, we probably have any comments on it, I just.
We intended this for a long time, we, they had an opportunity, if they just wanna honor this bid, to get out of it, they said they wanted to honor the bid, we told them they're gonna write a very tight contract, you know, making it very difficult for them to do any change orders, I mean, this is the price they have to do, the work we have to do with this price, and they tried to come forward, so.
Mr. Russell. Honestly, though, Mr. Poser, the bids are all, I mean, look at bidder four and bidder five on hole fifteen, one of them's bidding a hundred and sixty thousand, one of, one of them is bidding four hundred and eight thousand, so if they're all, all over the place, so if they, they're gonna honor the bid, they're gonna honor the bid, right?
And also the downtown pay that? Alright.
Other questions? In that case, I'll continue the motion.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, next item on the agenda, the Museum of Innovation and Science, MICEI, for the Vail Park CFA, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, he's a uh application uh put forward by MICEI, uh, it's recent work, really on their generally southern side of their property, which is Vail Park, somewhat to transition, so it's more of a seamless uh border there, people will be able to utilize the park, utilize the uh site of the MICEI, and uh, you know, continue just the improvements that are seen in downtown, we know, hopefully increase a little activity uh in the park.
Questions? Okay, in a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Vail Park Partnership, Mr. Russell.
Uh, yes, uh, in keeping with the CFA funding, uh, the council, we need to pass a resolution also authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership with MICEI uh to do this project, so it's just an additional step, um, that we're authoring the ma, authorizing the mayor to be the representative of the city to enter into the partnership.
So there's nothing to go, you know, back up, nothing, is this just?
That easy, it's this, it's this project.
Again, the application to the CFA is not a guarantee, if we get the CFA agreement, or I should say, if they get the CFA agreement, they would be the applicant receiving the funds, some of it would actually be done in the city property, so that's what we would enter into the agreement.
And if we don't get the CFA, it allows them to go for other grant funding to support the project, but ultimately, some of the project is in our, on our parkland, so that's why the.
We need the partnership regardless of what we have the CFA.
Correct, correct.
Any questions?
Move this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, habitability of local hotel, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, and um, you should see, have it attached in your packet, um, print out like the press release from the comptroller's office regarding this, and what I did was to also to find out how this all works locally, and locally, it's our department health that would be overseeing it. Um, I spoke with the director there, and um, at this point, what I've asked for, let me just step back a second, every single hotel, regardless if it's a hotel that's used for temporary residences for folks who are homeless, or if it's a regular hotel that any of us would stay at, it's still, is overseen by department health, so they go in and they do all the um, the looking at, making sure it's habitable, and everything that goes with all of that, so it doesn't matter what type of hotel is, all hotels are overseen in that way. I explained I was particularly looking for the one that the um Department of Social Services was using to house um folks who are homeless, and so um, I was, so I was told that in order to get that, I have to actually foil that list, so that is how I have to receive a list, because it doesn't make sense to look at every single hotel in the city of Connecticut, but just the one that the Department of Social Services um is uh is housing people. So, that's what I am doing, um, and I also looked through what the New York State says about this, and it talks about the habitability of hotels in a number of ways, about safety, about um, about um the outside of it, about the uh, having people have a way to come in and go out, and if there's obvious things, that are um, that are clear on hotels, so I don't have a way of, of looking that except um looking, talking to people who actually reside there, but Mr. Poser said that he was going to help provide some information on that, so were you able to, or?
No, I got a question for you.
Okay. Alright, so once um I get the information of which exactly hotels, then I'll be able to move forward and look at where they are right now. The questions I'm asking, um, they are supposed to be um inspected every year, is my understanding, so the question I'm asking now is, when's the last time they were, they were actually inspected, what were they inspected for? Um, I understand that it's under the um, the county's jurisdiction in order to do that, because they are the, the agency that offers the permits, makes the permits, but still, I'd like to see what the conditions are right now, and if things need to be improved, how we can work with the county to see that that happens, and you know, talk about the length of stays that people are having, um, I've been told by people that people are saying much, maybe uh over the twenty-eight day stay, that there's um, that's supposed to be allowed. So, once I find the, get the list of actual houses that the county, hotels rather, and hotels that the county is um using to house people, uh, we can move forward with that. I'll let you know when that happens, I'll put it back on your tab. There's questions or concerns? Alright. Is there anything else to come before housing recreation?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Or any?
Good, thank you, all the early committee on public service and utilities, a couple items here, the disinfection. And uh, I just wanna turn that over to my colleague.
What a nice transition.
What a nice segue.
I know.
You'll make yourself to the, take care of it. Take over, my friend.
First item on the agenda is the WQIP disinfection project, uh, Mr. LaFonda.
He is not here, but I'm uh prepared to address that again, it's a uh application for a CFA. Funding process. If you ask me the detail, I'll crush you. Uh, the existing disinfection process of the city's wastewater uh resource recovery facility, commonly referred to as our WRRF, includes bulk sodium hypochlorate for disinfection, and is in an existing chlorine contract basin, but does not include dechloridation. Our DEC uh recently issued the city of Connecticut a state pollution discharge elimination system, commonly referred to as a speedies permit, which went into effect on twelve one in two thousand and fourteen. The new permit included the lower discharge of point one-three milligrams per liter as their daily maximum for total residual chlorine, however, the bacteria limits in the permit did not change. The uh WRRF currently is unable to meet the new uh standards, and this application will enable us to bring that up to compliance under the speedies permit.
Any questions?
I'll crack this out.
Will the um city be required to do any management along this?
Uh, there is, uh, the total cost of this, this is part of a bigger project too, this where our total uh estimated cost is three point three million dollars, uh, the application program is two point five million dollars, so there's eight hundred thousand dollars here that is in the uh sewer fund that we use, here uh reserves or part of the ongoing capital project which you approved uh two or three cycles ago. But again, this is, you did that package uh before, bigger project, this is where we're trying to line up the money from different sources to minimize the impact to the bottom line for our city's connective and other customers that you serve.
Do we have a backup plan for funding if we are not awarded the CFA? Are we, are we researching other options?
We're looking at other options on this, although we feel fairly good about this application, yet we're not, sometimes we'll make sure, or the final decision, we're applying for two point five million dollars, uh, sometimes we may get that full amount, but I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll be on favor of the uh state level.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I got me all confused tonight. Thanks, Chris. We are going to be going to second item from the agenda tonight, and move on to agenda item number three, the taxicab discussion.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not assigned to me, but.
Okay.
So, again, thank you to Lieutenant Stickney and also Sergeant Harrigan, because they were really pivotal in, in guiding our first round of recommendations, and if we have an extra sheet, if you can have them, get it, get it to them, we should have one extra to share.
How many sheets? Two?
So, and, and thank you to the council members who got information back to me uh for this next round of, of organization and moving forward. So, uh, I think everyone was supportive of the requested language change in two, three, six dash six, which basically um flushes out, gives a little more color to the things that will be inspected by the department, but it just is, and that was Sergeant Harrigan's recommendation, and that we just to be a little more thorough in what we'll be looking for during the inspection process. The second item, two, three, six, eleven, uh, there were some questions from the council, one is, how um, how many medallions that we currently have pending application, now that we have the moratorium in place?
I'm sorry. I, I blank for a minute.
That's okay.
What was the question?
Um, how many medallions are currently pending, uh, I know that, you said Central Brown and All-Star are waiting approval?
Yeah, I would say there's, I think, I have four companies that have been calling me, probably with another total of upwards of eighteen. Um, All-Star again was the, was the only one that, they, Central Brown was an approved company here in the city, and had been running in the city for a while, and they bought, they, they bought Central Brown out, so I know that there's some precedent, I mean, obviously this is up to you, but there was some precedent in fact that they were an existing company here in the city already, um, I, I just told them it was gonna be completely up to you, they, they have been asking me, so just in case that, that owners of the company try to call you and ask you these same questions, um, but yeah, and then there's, the three other companies are not existing right now, but they're, they're on the doorstep, they, they want medallions.
And how many um completed applications do we have in our, our pile?
None, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't take anymore, um, I allowed one, I allowed one other company to come in, only because I had taken all their money and taken their application, they were awaiting the taxi meters to be installed, and that was another one cab, uh, discount, discount taxi service, but everyone else I just told them, we're not accepting them this time.
So even Central Brown and All-Star don't have an application?
They don't, but they had, they had contacted me previous to this, uh, but they had never, I haven't looked at any of their cabs, they haven't taken any money, I haven't taken any applications.
And how many of the medallions would they be asking for?
Central Brown had, they had twelve or thirteen, um, I, I don't know that he was gonna put that many cabs on, they're certainly interested, and he, he, the number that he had suggested to me at first was eight, that they were looking to go back up or even higher and expand their business.
So based on that information, do we have questions?
Can you just explain what the, we, we talked about the application, what does that process really like to say it's completed, it's not, what is the application for?
You know, essentially, when they just apply for a certificate, it, it's, it's not a very complicated um, you know, application, it's, it's two, two and a half pages, they essentially present me that they're a registered business, um, that's signed, notarized, um, they give me a list of the, how many cabs that, that, with all the bid numbers, um, so, and all the insurance information, um, you know, and I, I essentially do a cursory check on, on them as far as uh local checks, we don't have anything in place where I can do criminal histories on, on, on own, actual owners of these companies, um, so even though that they attest and swear to the fact that we have it in city code, that they, they can't be convicted felons, and, and all that language, um, we don't, I don't, I'm not allowed to go and check their criminal histories to, to see, verify that, um, but so essentially, they fill this out, get all the notarized, um, I look at it, make sure that they have all the documentation, and if they followed in the city code, then I have bring their cabs down, I inspect them all, and then I give them approval, and I give them their medallions for their cabs, and I fill everything out and keep the, keep the files on.
So, usually the application is, once you've done your, all of your inspection after you've?
Once you fill out all the paperwork, once, once you have it all signed and notarized, and once the cabs themselves, I see all the cabs, and they meet all the requirements, then, yes.
Any additional questions? Why, why can't we do the criminal history?
Uh, I'm, we're not allowed to do, we're not allowed to do the criminal histories on, on the owners, I'm not allowed to run, run criminal histories unless I have, unless I have a reason or I'm authorized to, we don't, we don't run criminal histories on the owners. The cab drivers we do.
Oh.
Well, they're, they're, they're all fingerprinted, and their criminal histories come back, that's another issue.
Okay.
So in changing our code, we could add in that the owners too would need to be fingerprinted with a background check, which seems, I mean, makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, because one of the things that um was put forward as a suggestion was that, at this point, I know that it's your um opinion, lack of a better word, that we're kind of at our maximum capacity right now for taxis, and um, you know, we were, I think, the general consensus was to freeze the number of medallions for this time, but I had a question for corporation. I had a question for Corporation Council in that, would it be possible for us to put in the code that the count, the number of medallions would just be designated by resolution of the council so that we could more easily change the number of the medallions, so it's not written right into the code, but instead written in the code that we would change by resolution?
Yeah, I don't see where that would be wrong.
It might just make a more seamless, you know, when the casino comes online and we have, you know, more tourism activity and for that, that the council would revisit it as far as, you know, need, and we could do that much more easily without having to change the code. Okay, so from, I'm sorry.
So that means that we have no completed applications? That means we're recommending to freeze it at this one, at this mark that we're at right now, at the 150?
That's for discussion.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, well, that's...
Well, it's not 150, it's 58, I believe, right? There's 150 drivers.
Yeah.
There's 58 medallions.
Yeah.
And 50, 59, because the one, one car, yeah.
One car, other company, 59.
This is 59.
Discount taxi service.
Really? But again, none of these are going to be new, correct? These are just, we have existed, correct, is what we're saying?
That's correct.
And I think that's an important piece again, because we're talking about the new legislation that's coming out, and from what I understand, we're the only area that records meters in their cars as well. So, again, I'd really like to see us sign on to the group with Albany, Rensler, Troy, whoever else is going to be involved in that. And I just don't want to see taxi cab companies investing in meters and the whole system and then come around, this whole group says, well, we don't need meters anymore, we're going to be charging by zone. So I think it kind of makes sense for us to really to freeze this as we're, again, discussing it, but it would make sense for us to freeze it until this group gets together, we're headed by CDT, and just determine what the rates and fares are going to be and how they're going to do that. Hopefully they'll get rid of these, whatever.
Something else you may want to ponder, because you're going to get calls from the cab companies themselves, the bigger ones, they, they want room to expand. I mean, they, they want, since they're existing, they were asking me and I said, that's not up to me, that's beyond me. You know, you're going to get phone calls though about, from Electric City and, and some of the other bigger ones, that they want to expand the number of medallions they have, if you put a moratorium on it, you know, because they want their businesses to grow. So it's just something else, you know, I want you to consider when, when you're going to start taking these phone calls.
And people really like to see Detroit, correct? What was Troy's number? They had...
Do it.
28, is that it?
28.
So we're almost double, so we're almost, Detroit.
Maybe similar size, but, you know, I'm not, that's not the only thing that we have to look at, how many people drive in Troy versus how many people are here to take tests? And that's not something, we're not somebody that knows, but it certainly impacts a number of taxis that we'll have, there may be more people here that just don't drive, because they're from someplace where they didn't, driving wasn't, you know, it's more convenient to pay top transportation, but now that they're here. So I think not only the population needs to be taken into consideration, the number of people that are accessing cabs, I don't know how we compare that to Troy necessarily. Well, in terms of freezing at this number, or completed applications, or what a completed application really looks like, what I think, based on what you said, to me, a completed application is where they've gotten everything stamped, et cetera, even if he has his own review to get, because they've done everything they needed to do. So do we consider a complete application when he's done all of your work as well, or where they've got, they're just notarized, et cetera? That's really another question for you too. When they've gotten all their paperwork in, but just haven't made the, the point hasn't been made for the other part, I think we have to really consider what a completed application really is.
I'm not sure that has bearing on this discussion though, I mean, if we don't have completed, if we don't have anybody that's even put in an application, correct, then...
No one, just looking.
Right, he has been holding people off, saying, don't put it, don't put in an application because there's a moratorium right now.
Because the last time you were here, you said that you had it stamped, so I guess I'm confused.
Yeah, listen, I, I don't, I don't want to mislead you. I take phone calls every day, and when I tell you, I, there are four, at least four companies now, there's a guy out of Saratoga who wants to start with six cabs. We're, I'm exchanging emails with these people, so I'm sorry, I didn't mean to mislead anyone, but there are, there are people that are very interested in coming in here, and if I had told them, sure, just come down, I would have applications for you. It's just, I didn't, I didn't. So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to mislead anybody, it's just, I take so many phone calls every day and I just see this building, and especially with the casino coming in, they want to get in here, they want to, they want to get their foot inside the door and they want these medallions, so it's sort of the whole reason that we thought we should start to look at this thing.
So there's no absolute, complete, submitted paperwork?
I have, no ma'am, I have nothing. I have no, I have not taken any applications, I just hold them out right now.
Okay. Thank you.
So do you want to do maybe just a quick poll on where we stand as far as who thinks we, do we want to freeze medallions at this time, do we, you know, anywhere?
Yes.
Again, as I commented earlier, I'd really like to see us freeze it now until the CDT process works in with what the entire region's looking to do. I think then this way we'll be on the same page with everybody else locally, I think that's important. Again, to a prospective catalog as well, have included meters, not have included meters. I certainly would appreciate a freeze on that.
Yes, freeze it until, freeze it until the CDT comes out, their, their resolution, and then we can work with that, so matter what we have here at the moment of time, freeze it, yes.
Any other questions?
Yes, I think also it would be good work for us to do to really talk with the companies that we have now and find out who wants to expand going forward, as opposed to letting new companies in and not allowing room for expansion for the companies that have been serving the city at this time. So, you know, and, and I think one of the keys is having in the code that the number of medallions can be set by the council, which would now be 59 medallions, right? And no new applications, I believe is where.
I understand.
Where we go and no new companies. The next thing, I got some feedback on...
So do we have to do another resolution extending this moratorium or are we, are we going to move this into our package?
We're going to have to, what I'm taught, what we need to do is have a public hearing. So we would need to make all of our changes and then have a public hearing.
I'm entirely with that.
And after we discuss this, I was going to ask Mr. Falatigo, it looks to me like we would need to extend the moratorium.
That's right.
One more time so that we could have enough time for the public hearing, which I think you explained to me we could do.
You can definitely extend it without having another public hearing. I don't fall off the top of my head what they, they want you to check on, but more than a month.
It's not been more than a month. I think it's been like three weeks.
I'm sorry.
We had discussed the medicabs and the fact that they don't have a meter, but if they were required to have a medallion, at least we could inspect them, but there were questions for the Corporation Council if that would be legal, and also if you're aware of anyone else, other entity that's inspecting them, or you don't know how that's regulated.
We're not aware of any, you know, medicabs are, have been separate, so it's, you know, our concern and what we've seen is medicabs are picking up in the city and really we know for safe. And in order, city ordinance, you know, they are, they are picking up, they are getting paid for fares, how it's being paid for, and we have no way to, you know, make sure things are okay with them. You know, it was a concern of ours, also occasionally they're being used improperly. You know, we've had that a couple occasions where they've taken flat rates, certain amount of money without a meter, which is definitely, you know, against city code at this time, so it's, you know, it's a concern.
And I would like to say with regard to that, it, it sounds like something that is deeper than where we're going right now and finding out how they're being regulated, who's regulating them, and how they might fit into this overarching thing, should we decide as a municipality to sign on to that. So I, I'm not sure that's somewhere we should go right now, and then how does the, how do issuing them medallions, how do we decide who to issue medallions to, who not to? I just think it's a bigger discussion, but that's, you know, my opinion.
In terms of medicabs, I did do some background to find out who does that. They are inspected by the New York State Department of Transportation, and their inspection is done every six months for safety issues. And they are also connected with the New York State Department of Health who pay, because they work through Medicaid, and so that's how they, you know, get their fares. And they don't just like, they don't create their own list, they, there's, this particular company that I spoke with, there's like a liaison who actually sends them a list every single day of who they're going to pick up. So they don't create their own list, they don't work directly with the doctor's office, but the doctor's office is working with this company, MAS, who then generates a list and at the beginning of the day, they give their list and they know who they're going to go pick up and, you know, drop in where they're going to drop them on. So that's how, that's how it works with cabs. So there is, there is oversight.
But just that, just so, just so you guys understand that, that metered cab companies as well, they do both. So, you know, like Capital Land will turn off the meter and go pick up these Medicaid runs, and they do, they do on the paper slips. The, the problem we have, we get calls all the time about them running un-metered, un-metered fares, and then the regular Medicaid, Medicaid, unmarked cabs, the ones that you see all around, the red ones and the yellow ones, go to Price Shopper any, any day of the week and you'll see three or four of them hovering around, waiting for people to come out, and they're essentially, they're gypsy cabs. They're, they tell these people, we'll, we'll bring you, here's a flat rate, give me nine bucks and I'll take you any groceries home. You sit there in front of Price Shopper, any, any store, all these, any of them, you see them working. So our concern is that they are ferrying passengers here in the city, that they're taking business away, some, some of them from legitimate cab companies, and, you know, obviously some of them are, you know, overseen, I mean, you know, there's still the regular department motor vehicle inspections and, you know, registrations that we, we can see as police officers, but we never get to sign the cabs, we never get to look at them, we never get to see, you know, the same thing we do with the metered cabs, at least we get to look at them and get to talk to them and talk to the owners, so.
We don't even get a list of who's coming into the city, from where. So, you know, there's companies from quite a ways out that'll come in to different doctors in the city, you know, we have no idea, you know, if it's legit or not.
So is there a way to, for us, if this just, who thought that we could work with, if, if someone wants to, through the Department of Transportation, come into the city, that we could make sure that we work with our local law enforcement so that if they're coming here, we know, as opposed to just saying, yeah, you know, you can set up shop anywhere pretty much? But don't they additionally, if they're bringing, if they're starting a business here, has to go through our, our planning commission, all of that, because they're establishing a place of business?
Who's to say they have a place of business here?
They work at their home.
They may be in Albany, they may be in, like, amazing...
Well, I've seen, I've seen the places of business here, so that's what I'm learning, if, if they're here, I've actually seen them where their cabs are there, they're going in and out of their business, so I would think they would have gotten, had to go through the planning commission.
I would assume they do, like any other business.
So I guess the question that we have here is, can we issue medallions to them? Is that something that we can?
Right, legally, we need to know.
To gain better control over these medicabs and whoever else, but I think that's really the key of this whole thing.
I'll look into that and I'll, you can answer as soon as you can.
It'll certainly help them, help us, and again, help our residents. And that's the bottom line, it's all about safety for our residents and as customers doing it. I think that's really what we're looking to do here, and making sure that the services are being arrived, but it's a safe city, as the officer just said, I mean, like those. Some are look safe and gypsy cabs, my gosh.
Yeah, the other question that came up was the Lens program versus the annual finger, well, versus the fingerprinting every three years, and then another person added a question about, do we, would it be helpful if we fingerprinted every year?
Well, Troy, what Troy does, right now what happens is when, when they apply to be cab drivers, we, we require them to go be fingerprinted and we actually get their criminal history back, you know, prior to us approving them for a taxi cab license. But essentially, if, if we have some cab drivers that have been cab drivers for the last 15 years, and we don't require them to be fingerprinted again, if they continue to update their license every single year. So unless we were to see the arrests come across our desk, I can't run their criminal histories again. We can't, no, if they got arrested in Buffalo for, you know, rape, we wouldn't know about it. And what Troy did is every, they, they put in every three years that they, they must be fingerprinted again and we can look at their, their criminal histories again. I, I think, I think every three years is probably appropriate. I mean, every...
Yeah, I mean, there is a financial cost that they incur doing this, but it also gives us some, some leeway and we're able to better manage and make sure that the residents are safe.
Every year when they renew them, we look at the, we look at the local databases, we look at the portal for their licenses, and we look at the local criminal history, but not everyone is in our database. So I wouldn't be able to see Saratoga Springs or even Colony had they been arrested there. I can only look at the different municipalities that are hooked on with our records management system. So we wouldn't necessarily see all the other arrests. The Lens program is just, I just printed out some, some stuff, I don't know if you want to just take a look at it. The Lens program is the license event notification system, it's free to municipalities, and essentially, basically what it is, is once, once they sign a waiver, then, and they agree to it, the state DMV sends us updates to, for every license suspended, any tickets, points under license, accidents, they'll send it, send it to us, notify us. For the cab drivers' trust, we think that that's a really good thing. Saratoga Springs does this, we thought it was a good idea, so it's just something that we would like to see happen, you know, are you guys, other things for you guys to consider?
So the difference between Lens is, Lens is all DMV, it's not criminal as far as, you know, drugs or, you know, sexual assault or anything?
The Lens program, occasionally people do get their license suspended for criminal acts, especially the drug related things. So that, we would get that notification, so with the current city ordinances, the, if they're suspended, basically they get suspended their taxi license, is also suspended for the remainder of the year. That's something we should know about, or we feel that we should know about if somebody doesn't have a license and they're still out there driving.
Any other questions?
Yeah, well, about the, you know, you talked about the criminal history and, you know, if, if it's not within our jurisdiction that you can't, can't get the information. Is that, like, if the background has to go through the sheriff's office, would that, would that expand the, no?
No. Because they, you have, you have, we have to have a reason or be authorized to run their criminal histories for something, and I, I can't, I can't just do it unless it's, it's written in the city code and they agree to it, and then we can send them to be fingerprinted and then I get it. Otherwise, I have to have, I have to have a reason to actually run their criminal histories.
So we would have to change the code to say whatever we felt was the appropriate timeframe?
Yes.
So I, I think all the feedback that I got was that everybody supported the Lens program. The only, I think, that I think is up in the air is, well, we would want to add the owners in to the fingerprinting requirement in the code, but three years versus annually, and I think your recommendation stands at every three years.
I think so, because as Lieutenant said, it costs them $75 to do it, to go and be fingerprinted, so it's, there's a cost associated with it.
Have you noticed that it's the taxi cab drivers that are paying for it, or their companies are paying for them?
My understanding is they pay for it themselves, the companies don't pay for it.
I, you know, I, I know that you said three years, I'm, I'm just thinking, I'd really be really talking over here, quite frankly, but if we can even go two years, just, because, you know, we've had a lot of talk about people coming in, you know, major insults of people that are going to be, you know, probably as cab drivers, et cetera. So I think it'd be really important for us to know, you know, as more and more people come in, to be able to do that more regularly. And I know that they have to incur costs, so I'm not saying that, you know, not taking that consideration, so, but I think that if we can consider going to every two years.
Anyone have any comments about two years?
I think because the cost involved, we could make it, don't forget, these guys are script, they love to drive cabs.
I had originally wanted to...
I had originally wanted it for one year, but I, you know, there's compromise. You can do, you can do two years, as Mr. Porterfield. I think it's good that we do background check, you know, fingerprints of these every year, so that way you're not losing anything in between. Like you mentioned, just, well, something happened in Buffalo, you're not aware of it, until the next three years. So I think two years would be good, one year is better. I stick with two years.
Do you have any other thoughts, Mr. President?
I'm happy to take the recommendation of the professionals, but I wouldn't fight if the general consensus is two years. I think annually is, is a lot.
Mr. President?
I agree with Mr. Moonver, and I'd prefer annually as well. There's a lot of things that could slip through the cracks, and with the amount of visitors hopefully we'll be having, and just the protection of our residents. I would like to see it annually, but as a compromise, I would agree with Ms. Porterfield's two-year suggestion.
Again, who does the fingerprints? Is it done locally, Lieutenant, or where do we do this?
They're, they're done through fingerprint service, so usually, a couple of local, like, patients they go to.
Then they report back to you, then, obviously.
Their, their history will come back to us, and usually when they turn their application in, you know, it's held until we get that information back. We have receipt also. The receipt that they give is comes with us, comes to us.
So I'm thinking ahead with legislation here, so again, it would be from the last time that they had their fingerprints, it would be two years from that point, then, right, that they'd have to re-fingerprint. Again, I just think it's the safety of our, of our residents and our potential customers that enter the city and are riding these cabs. I think that's really key, is, is safety, and for all, for all our folks, I'd say, no, for two years as well.
You know, my, my thought with this is, by having the LENS program, and if we had the fingerprinting every third year, they kind of work in conjunction with each other. You know, so I kind of, I understand, you know, where this program would work together, but the consensus seems to be two years.
Okay.
I think the LENS program, too, we can just start that.
Yeah, right away. Well, what's the code is?
Certainly, I'll, I'll find out. It's just, it's just getting the roster together and applying to the state, and so I'm sure. I guess we just have to come up with a waiver for all, all the cab drivers.
And the last thing I got feedback on was the certificate fee and the rates of fare increase. Our certificate fee is significantly lower than surrounding municipalities. Right now, it's $250. Other feedback was that there's nothing in there that really says renewed annually. And also, the September date for reduced cost, we just thought would be more effective if we did six months and six months. So a couple of recommendations came through that we raised the medallion cost to 500, put in there, Mr. Falatigo, that it's renewed annually. They're valid from January 1st to December 31st. And if they're applied on, on, or after July 1st, we cut the rate to $250. So I didn't know if you had any input on that, if that seemed like it would help track things and make things a little more uniform.
The dates are okay. Right now, we go April, April with the medallions.
The only, you know, depending on how we move forward with the, with the other legislations, it's, it would be, it's a, a lot of added work.
Yeah.
For the first of the year, right now, the, their taxi license or hack license is to the first of the year. So, you know, we have a onslaught of 150 people trying to get their license renewed, usually in the last two or three days, because they wait to the last minute. So, you know, you're talking that, and then adding 59 taxis to be brought down for inspections, and stuff like that. So, you know, if we do it, it's, you just gotta understand, it creates a lot of work in the office. That's why we were doing April, to split it up a little bit.
I don't think anybody has any problem with April, we just didn't see that anywhere. We thought it was January 1st, and then September. So I think April and September is fine, or, you know.
April and six months from July.
Just doing annuals, whatever people come in, it's good for one year, is that?
It is, it is that way. It's just that if they go after a certain amount of time, they rotate it. But it can be April, and then six months from after April, first. Which would actually be October 1st, right?
You go in July, you go until July, that way you get the $500, not the $250.
So we could, I mean, that, you might want to say if anybody cares.
Right. No, I, well, Mr. President and Mayor were, were saying that instead of doing just April to April, when you would apply, it would be from that month to the following year. So, you know, if you were to apply in December, you would pay your $500, and you'd have until December.
How does that work in your world, though?
The only issue with that, and it makes us a little bit, it makes it a little bit more difficult for us to find out, you know, we give them up until a certain date to get their certificate, their medallion. That way, we know everybody's been inspected, because every year is a different colored sticker on the window. So we can tell who's running around unspected or not. So if we do it differently, the only way we're gonna tell is actually to stop that vehicle. Instead of just looking and seeing what color medallion is on the window, you know, it, it does, it makes a difference.
So we just do April, and then six months from April, right?
And anyone thoughts about April, and then six months following, instead of January, too?
Oh, whatever's, you know, works best for your paperwork and all that stuff, it's fine with the man. You know better the workload than.
We'd also see, we'd be able to program this into the LPRs, so that the owner car would just pick it up, the license plate readers, if we move to higher levels of technology.
So that gets us back to the annual.
September.
September, September, December, December. So we don't have to do the 500, 250.
But we're not there yet.
It's, it's rare that, usually, when they're coming in late, it's usually, you know, when they're taking a cab out of service, and we give them the reduced cost for that, most of them pay, they come right up in April, they know, and they bring their check for 13 or 15 or $1,800, and pay us. Most of the cabs get done in April, March and April. 98% of them, I'm sorry.
Well, Mr. President, we're talking about license plate readers, but how many of those, is every vehicle equipped with them, police vehicle?
No, right now, we have, we have two of our traffic units equipped with them. We have more that are budgeted to be installed, very significant costs, so we're getting them and updating as we can. We would love to have a cab there.
Mr. President? Is there a way we could go to a system like our inspection stickers with the punch holes?
We, right now, they're, we do punch them for a year. We do a couple of different colored stickers, and then have the ear punch so they can repeat. So we are buying stickers every year. We can do, it just, it's more difficult for every officer on the street to know, you know, without looking. Same thing with a vehicle inspection, you know, unless it's passed the first of the year, you know, and it's the previous year, you won't know whether that inspection has run out.
Mr. President?
I was just gonna say, I just think we need to make this a streamlined, because if a car with the LPRs isn't behind the taxi, then it's not gonna pick it up. And unless the car is stopped, or an officer is actually looking, they're not gonna be able to see January through April, and I think you have a tremendous workload as it is, and, you know, why leave his chance? I think it would be a good added measure to program it in, you know, because it would help. But I think right now, they need to just understand what works best systematically, and not recreate that, but that's just my two cents.
And if we're, and if we're thinking about changing it, not to just, like, do it all at once, we'd have to, like, kind of gradually.
Baby steps.
Yeah. We have to phase those changes in, because that would be, again, a lot of work for the police department to take on, so.
I also think that the April 1st gives our taxi companies enough time to prepare for the difference in the certificate fees that we'll be changing when, upon renewal. So it's another consideration to have.
And also, the taxi cabs that are running now, the majority of them are gonna be reapplying in April anyway.
Right. And then the last thing was rate of fare increase. There's a lot of concern expressed with regard to what it costs our citizens to take cabs now, you know, versus, so most recommendations for fare increases were, I don't want to say minimum, but small. And so I think the majority looked at raising 350 to 375, and increasing 25 cents per quarter mile to 30 cents. So I'll just throw that out there for discussion. That was really the last piece of it.
Any questions?
And again, as I mentioned, I mean, part of that whole CVG, or CDT, thing is to talk about rates throughout the entire tri-city area, the capital district area. So I would certainly have no problem supporting this now, but just trying to figure out if they would have been superseding us, how that's all gonna work, once we get all the information. But I think, you know, taxi, they have had a rate increase of, let's say, 16 years, which is really weighing low on what we do. But again, we also want to keep in mind that the customers, again, that are using the cabs, and what this is gonna put on them, the burden on our local residents. But again, I would support this at this time, again, waiting for a CDT to come in somewhere down the road here and really work with us together, so I would support that as well.
Any other questions, or you have some ready, please?
So I think everything that we were looking to find some changes in, we got feedback on, we have consensus on, with the exception of the medicabs, which we don't know where we legally stand. So I guess I would ask that Mr. Farari ask whether we want to move forward and deal with the medicabs as a separate legal issue, and call for public hearing on the changes discussed tonight. I'll work with Mr. Falatigo to come up with specific language on what we discussed this evening, or whether we want to continue to hold until we can dive into the medicab issue, which I think is going to take a chance on our moratorium running out, the second moratorium running out, before we can probably get to the bottom of that.
Is everyone comfortable with calling for the public hearing and doing the medicab settlement?
A medicab is a big issue, like, being used around the way it's issued. And that's the big complaint, given the cab companies, that there's people running around medicabs, giving flat rates, and taking their business away. So they're sliding under the law by not having a legal. That's a tough question, if we want to move this along, but we don't want this to get lost, either.
Right.
Because it's an important piece of this, of this code. So it has to be addressed, whether we want to do it now or later. Just to the council.
One thing the council will imply, we can include the medicab things right now as part of the public hearing, and then in draft legislation. And I'm sure that I'll go have an answer reported before that process is complete, and it can be removed before the final adoption of the legislation, if, if it's not appropriate.
No, council?
I'm not sure, okay, what would the, what would the question be in terms of the public hearing in terms of, for the medicabs? For the other ones, you know, we, you know, we talked about the medallion increase, fare increases, but what would our basic, you know, what would we be saying to the public to discuss in terms of medicabs? Because it sounds like most of the questions that need to be answered need to be answered by us. Whether it's legal or not to, to issue medallions, can they be licensed by that? So that seems like a question that we have to answer.
Well, council could put in a penalty structure, too. So if you have a medicab that's acting contrary to what taxi cab work is, would allow the officers to ticket them, cite them, and hopefully, gain compliance.
And to give them a medallion, with that, they currently don't need at this point to issue a medallion, so our folks can be inspecting them, and have some kind of control on, am I correct?
Yeah, maybe even if it's, it's just my suggestion, maybe even if it's a different colored medallion, you know, and just something to say, "This is a medicab, and, you know, you were registered with the city, we looked at the cab, and, you know, I don't know if we can make them pay us for that or not." I mean, I would say that to be honest with you, but I don't know. I mean, it's just a suggestion.
Just to identify.
So that's what we asked the public hearing, is, sorry, that we would issue the medallions to them? That would be the part, okay, well, that makes sense, if we have something that we're asking that public can give input on.
So I'm sorry, do we just call for a public hearing, is that, oh, okay. And can, how do we, can we call for an extension on the moratorium now? Because it's definitely gonna exceed, by the time we call for the public hearing.
Yeah, I'd recommend you, somebody move a resolution to extend the moratorium.
All right, so, Mr. President? Porterfield, all in favor? On half. Any other business to come before public servicing utilities? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to thank everybody, because I really got a lot of feedback on this, and it helped to shape it, and come back to the table is something that we can work off of in the next step. So thank you for everybody, for, you know, your attention to this, and where we got. And a fairly timely manner.
We listened to you. Anything else to come before public servicing utilities? Mr. President? Porterfield, in favor?
Aye.
For adjourned?
All right, I'll bring you, follow the way of the Committee on Public Safety, and we have one item here, discussion about fireworks, and Ms. President.
We have a problem.
Really?
You know, I, in, just in an effort not to keep, Chief Senate, oh, he's Chief Senate. Maybe we can have, hear from Lieutenant McCracken and Chief Senegal on, on what it, what the landscape looked like out there this year, and then also, safety concerns, so Lieutenant McCracken can go first. We all know that the majority of the issues are with illegal fireworks, not so much the legal fireworks. We'll have that conversation in a minute.
At her request, I ran a call history from February 0001 until 0700 hours this morning. There's 141 calls for service for fireworks in the city, so that's 141. That's in a three and a half day period. And that's just those people who called. Those aren't, those aren't repeat calls, because what's the cause created for that address? It's just any additional calls for that, we'll go under that call. It is against Long State of New York to have, to done off the deal with fireworks. It's a Class B misdemeanor. Think that my officers are capable of affecting 141 arrests in a 70-hour period. It's not capable, not capable of doing it, completely taxing on the resources, particularly when you consider most of the calls for service do take place later on, in the afternoon and into the evening. So you're talking high-volume calls during a relatively short-time period. In order to make an arrest, you have to have probable causes personally you're dealing with, was A, the one, if the fireworks are illegal, that they're not the ones that have been signed off. And most of them, I mean, Saturday, I watched the show over in the city last night. And that, that stuff is a little sprinkle that you're supposed to be shooting off of your lawn. We get to have, you know, you have to confirm that the fireworks that you're dealing with are in fact unlawful. And that the individual who you're charging is the one who was lighting a lawn. And if you don't have direct knowledge, and you have to have someone else to sit there and put pen and paper, give us an affidavit, and we can make the arrest. And again, very, very time-consuming, which is a relatively low-level offense. However, it's a quality life issue. With the fireworks, you're also looking at, you know, public safety aspect. Three houses burned down in Amsterdam, and a kid playing with fireworks. So, and you're talking about a lot of, a lot of resources that you have to throw at it. Fortunately, fireworks season seems to start earlier and earlier every single year. I think we officially kicked ours off around Easter this year. It used to be somewhere around Memorial Day would start, and we just keep on going. Fireworks are going off more and more, more constantly.
I can't, Ms. President, oh, sorry, you go ahead.
Actually, the problem isn't just in the city, it's everywhere. It doesn't matter what suburb, the town that you're in. Last week, I was in the city, I was also in Scotia. in Scotia, you know, no matter where you went, you heard fireworks. Most people think that fireworks are legal, and obviously they're not. A lot of people really don't realize, I think it's actually gotten a little better over the last couple of years, we actually had one call for service probably four or five years ago. They're illegal, fireworks, they are illegal, they've always been illegal, people just don't care, really, that's the bottom line, they don't care, and the city park is overwhelmed, and certainly no way they can handle a hundred and forty-one arrests. We did have, we were fortunate not to have any major issues, we did have one car fire, not related to fireworks, but as pointed out, everybody knows, the recent fire with the juvenile, they lost three houses. Fireworks are dangerous, no matter what they are, sparklers, if you're going to play with them, whether they're in the car, or in the house, or outside, it's something that needs to be dealt with, and you can't clearly, I'm sure, so, hopefully now that the Fourth of July is over, things settle down, and it'll be something that, uh, that we'll have to deal with. I mean, it's mainly a police issue, and, uh, maybe we'll job, uh, dealing with it.
Ms. Brazel?
So, just for clarification, I, I don't know how the police could possibly regulate this, because people are really smart, they let off like five, and then they stop for half an hour, and then they let off five, and then they stop, and, you know, it's, it's nearly impossible, and I can tell you at ten twenty last night, I was sitting in my pajamas, in my car on Broad Street, trying to find out where the fireworks were coming from, so that I could call the police, and two, two, um, two patrol cars went by, so I know they're on it, but they, they never let off any more fireworks, so then what do you do, you know, it's, it's almost impossible.
And here's the thing, is you have a hundred and forty-one calls on top of everything else that's going on in the city.
Absolutely.
So, it's not like the city of Schenectady is going to slow down and say, okay, we're not going to engage in criminal activity today because people are shooting off fireworks, that's something that the police have to deal with. We still have robberies, we still have, all, all the other things that occur in an urban area, um, and it's, you know, to kind of put those types of resources to be able to dedicate it, it's, you're asking a lot.
Absolutely.
And I don't know, and, and again, for a class B misdemeanor, that by the end of the day is going to get ACOD'd or, or, or played down to violation of sort of conduct.
And, so, I asked you both here not to put you on the hot spot, but to have your input as we have this discussion, because the bottom line is, we know that how difficult it is for the police to control, we know the safety issues involved from the fire department in the case of Amsterdam, and we know that our citizens are truly scared, our citizens are actually truly scared. I can't tell you the number of stories and emails and everything else that I've been privy to, of people who are in houses that are, I mean, Broad Street is a perfect example, those houses are so close to one another, he was letting off professional grade fireworks over the course of an hour and a half, and it was really scary, and dogs were going crazy and everything else, and, you know, I've had stories of people that wet down their garage roofs because the people behind them are so close, and they're letting off fireworks, and they've already lost a house to fire, or whatever the case may be, so, the reason I put it on the agenda is to brainstorm as to what some of the things we may do to make this better, because we have to do something. I know that the amount of firework activity between two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen was tremendously different, because be, having the legal sparklers in Schenectady County has blurred the lines for people, so that, you know, they now think they can do whatever they want, so, I, I, you know, my suggestion that I bring to the table i- is that, you know, we reach out to Schenectady County and ask them to rescind the fact that they are legal in this county, whether they can drive to Saratoga County, or Montgomery County and buy them, or whatever the case be, is what the case be, but if we say they're illegal, period, end of story, in Schenectady County, there are no blurred lines, and people maybe will stop being so confused when they call the clerk's office and say, what date can we continue to let off firecrackers to, which is never, because firecrackers aren't legal, so, you know, I just open the discussion to everyone else, but we have to take some course of action, it's not getting better, it's getting worse.
Ms. Brazel?
I agree totally with you, Ms. Brazel. There's definitely, if you remember, I, that's what I said two weeks ago to council, I mean, they said we should go, we should probably rescind this, because there's definitely a spike happened when sparklers and poppers became legal last year, that's when the big spike happened. I've seen it, you've seen, I sort of seen and agree to that. It isn't that it was done with any malice that the county passed this, but it opened up the door, and sometimes when you open the door just a crack, it swings all the way over, and I think that's what we see here, it happening, and, I mean, you didn't have to go to Jumpin' Jacks last night, at least in Bellevue, it was full-blown fireworks were going on, and we're talking about public safety, that's the biggest thing, forget the annoyance, people being kept up late, dogs scared out of their minds, babies not being able to sleep, old people not being able to sleep, including myself, we'll put that all aside, it's a public safety issue, it's a huge public safety issue, and how do you put a dollar amount on that for sales tax? There's no dollar amount that can cover that, so, I'm all for urging, sending a resolution to the county and urging them to, please rescind this resolution, it just caused too many problems, they tend to say fireworks on them, they don't say legal fireworks or poppers, they say fireworks, so naturally, a lot of people don't need a lot of urging to take that a step further, and that's what they do, they take it a step further, and just, but streets were closed off, I had calls where people couldn't go down Hagan Street, it was closed off, fireworks were in the middle of the road, cars couldn't pass, can't have this, that's, that's for sure, I realize, chief, it happens all over, but we're concerned about Schenectady, that's where we live, that's what we represent, so, you know, murder's happening all over, and I understand all that, but we have to do what we can do to protect our city. Put the message out to the county, and that's the only thing you can do. Make all fireworks illegal. That makes it easier, makes it easier for the police, I think, to, and make it easier for the police, because I know when I talked to some officers last year, they were a little confused in what was allowable, what wasn't allowable, and naturally, they were saying, well, I thought they were allowable, so, it's, it's opened the big door, there's no question, they know they're not allowable, because they're not buying from the tents that are on the side of the road.
If you buy from the pickup truck parking lot at a time. It's, yeah, I agree, you can buy all your rolling candles and your sparklers here, you want the good stuff, it's in the bed of my pickup truck, and when fireworks are going to go by, he takes a look at that stuff, he's not looking at, this guy's got, he's sitting in the back of his pickup truck, he's not looking at sitting in the back of the U-Haul, you know, I was offered, as I was going there, you know, hey, do you want stuff that, I said, no, I'm all set, thanks. It's, it's not hard to get, and you don't have to drive to Pennsylvania anymore.
I don't think there's any other option, so we hope, if you're doing it, you can arrest.
So, maybe as a suggestion, we do those, we do those undercover things, that we're talking about, you know what I mean, because I mean, you did inspections of, what, three or four of the ones that were in the city, right, and you shut down three of them.
Court doors, well, big, shut down for a short period of time.
Yeah, they'd be open.
Yeah.
They just had to close their tents.
Do some undercover stuff, you know what I mean, and, and just the empty son of the guns that are selling illegal stuff, I mean.
It's a funny short time period though, it's fireworks season, like I said, it's starting earlier and earlier and earlier, it used to be Memorial Day, that was kind of the start, and we're going off of it before then this year. Truthfully, you make an example, the people that you catch very, very early on, you do it in a very public manner, you have the DA's office sign on board that they're going to prosecute, you make an example, and you embarrass the hell out of them, you print their names in the photos, and you use it, we will not tolerate it here, and you have to be able to invest the time and the manpower, frankly, the money, to do it, and, and I understand you can't put a dollar, cent, you know, on public safety, but at the same time, when the budget comes out, you have to be able to.
I meant sales tax, you were going to talk about bringing in sales tax, like one of the reasons the county passed that, because you're going to bring in.
These guys are clerks, they're saying, backs is paying it back, man.
They're paying it back, out of control.
So, bless the pleasure, what are we looking to do?
We also have to be realistic, this isn't going to stop it, unfortunately, and I propose a resolution that we send to the governor, to these states attorney general, our assemblymen and senators, as well as the state troopers, asking for increased enforcement of illegal movement of, oh, that's not the word either, well, movement of illegal fireworks across state lines and into the state, because that's really what's impacting, it's not the sparkler so much as the illegal fireworks, and if they were to step up patrols, let's face it, they're the ones that passed allowing this to happen, if they increase that, and somehow, I know it's not going to stop everything, but as the lieutenant said, making a very public stance on this could go a long way.
Yeah, Ms. Brazel?
I'm in support of that too, but I think the two things could go hand in hand very nicely, I think we send a clear message to our residents of Schenectady County that fireworks are illegal, period, you know, in all ways, shapes and forms, and, and then also work on the illegal, you know, distribution across state lines, but I think we can't do enough, we cannot do enough, because it's really scary, and, you know, God forbid, an Amsterdam story pops up, you know, in, in somewhere where our houses are just so close together, and, and ruins the lives, like, you know, the loss of your home and all your, your belongings for the sake of, you know, a, a quick thrill, so, I, I just think we can't do enough.
Sure.
I happen to speak to a few of our county legislators, I know the issue is coming up tonight at a meeting, not saying not to do it, but maybe we should wait and see what they actually do before we do something, because they might come up with something that we can work with, or we might have to go this route, but just to see what they come up with first.
There's a question for legal, can we deny this pop-up shed license to operate in Schenectady?
Can we deny anyone who has to get the certificate they need in order to run these businesses in, in certain situations? Brooks office and I already talked about those before we started issuing licenses, I don't know if anybody was denied, and certainly, something I may have no luck to look at the licensing, and how we might be able to strengthen that, or there's only requirements before the next, you know, sales season kicks in in December.
That's something that we want to look at, you know, more in depth, and if we can get all the licensing, that would kind of like curtail it a little, because it's, it's too accessible all over the place, every corner you turn, there's a pop-up shed selling fireworks.
There were four in the city, right, Chuck?
Four.
Four, we had four in the city.
You mean, I'm wrong.
So, it must have been doing a lot of driving there.
Two right over, just over the border in Rotterdam.
Right over, oh, certainly.
They're everywhere, they're everywhere.
Chuck, do you want to say something?
Pardon?
You want to say something, you had your hand up.
No, just basically what Carl said, I mean, we brought, basically, our transient business, and the code does not indicate what items can or can't be sold by a transient business, but we brought code enforcement involved this year, and also the Department of Planning, so, anything on the books that applied to any type of a temporary structure, orders, size of the lot, size of the tent, all of those laws were enforced this year, and that was one of the things that delayed the opening of three of the, the five, there was an electrical problem, someone had actually run a, a lead cord from the main building out to the parking lot to run the guy's cash register, so that was one of the reasons to shut them down, but, you know, the, a business is a business, and it's a legal business, we just made sure that they abided by all of the laws that, that applied to something like that.
Ms. Brazel?
I guess I, I need to get a little more clarification, Mr. Pollan, are you saying that before we move forward, we should find out what the counties would do, or are you saying the county's looking at this because we're discussing it?
The county is looking at, they said, at least two people said they were going to talk about it tonight at a meeting, so, it might just, instead of duplicating records, maybe just wait a day or two and see what, what they come up with, if anything.
Well, I, I, well, I suggest that since we have intergovernmental, maybe that, that many work, then with the county, and so we can, you know, work through it in that way, as opposed to just kind of waiting to see what happens, to have an intergovernmental committee, or the county, meet out to the county in, in an official way.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Ray?
Just in follow-up to that point, I think Mr. Pollan, I mean, the reaction is not unique to Schenectady, so you're seeing this in other urban areas, pretty much a hundred percent supported by the Russian Firefighters Association, the police calls go up, and you have to look at, you know, just how do you address that in a public policy manner, to not only deal with the issue with Schenectady, but where it's being repeated in urban areas across the state, how do you bring some common sense back into, you know, you want people to celebrate the Fourth of July, you have a good time, but not do it in a manner that puts their neighbors and themselves at risk.
Brazel?
I'm happy to defer to whatever the majority of the council feels, but I feel that we are elected to serve the citizens of this city, and we have a responsibility to show them that we are very concerned, so, not to work against the county, or not to call the county out, but I think as a legislative body, we should state whether or not we support fireworks being legal in Schenectady County, and, and I think that doing both resolutions is still of value, to say that as elected officials, we're not pleased with that elite, you know, that fireworks, sparklers, whatever you'd like to call them, are legal in the county, but I defer to the majority of the council on that.
The stuff that we're talking about are illegal in the first place, let's remember that, first of all, the stuff that you're hearing and seeing are all illegal fireworks, it's nothing to do with the county resolution or legislation whatsoever, so it's two different things, I certainly understand what you're saying, so somebody had a comment there?
You know, and, and I, I agree with you, however, I think we have to make a point that it's something that we're not tolerating, and because we're being affected by, by phone calls, you know, by issues, and so I think we need to make a point saying that, sorry, you know, but this is how we feel on behalf of our people, that we think you should change the law, and rescind this.
And I understand that, and we've had that comment before, and I think all of us understand what's legal and what's not legal, but I don't think our citizens completely embrace what's legal and not legal, and by saying nothing's legal, I think we clear that off.
John?
I don't think there's a person in this room who doesn't think it's serious, and it's a problem, and we all are very concerned, whether you're talking Bellevue, Central Park, Hamilton Hill, Mount Pleasant, it was crazy, and Ms. Porterfield's suggestion of working intergovernmentally, I think is a good one, we can come up with something perhaps more tighter, better legislation by working together over the next day or two, and it's not meaning we're not taking it serious, it's not meaning that we don't think this is a problem, it's how can we best serve the people in the city of Schenectady, and I think that was a very good suggestion by Ms. Porterfield, but I'd like to move along with the other, both resolutions at some point, but the one for sure, and the other one, intergovernmental.
Okay, any other discussion? So, I guess we go around the table here, right, and just see what we're looking to do, I guess, we're looking to do just a letter, a resolution, or a letter to county legislature, obviously, asking them to remove the approved sale of the sparklers as allowed in New York State, with that law to prove, to disallow it in Schenectady County.
Sell any fireworks to the county, we're talking about it.
That's legal.
The law's already a legal one.
Nothing is legal.
Right, all right, and then, do we just want to go around on that piece first, and then take the other one second, how's that, is that all right?
Okay.
So, you're okay with that, Ms. Ray, and John?
Yeah.
Please, uh, you.
Sure.
Okay, so that's fine, so then what about the second piece that you were talking about again?
A letter to the governor, the attorney general's office.
And our elected officials, yes.
And the state trooper, Comda, or the head of it, whatever, I think it's Comda. Asking, asking for increased enforcement on illegal fireworks, for example, you got a piece of literature in the mail, selling fireworks, that's something the attorney general should. That's something the attorney general should uphold. And also increase patrols at state borders. People are bringing them in or getting into illegal fireworks. I know you're not going to stop everything, but if you can stop a few and make it very public, as the lieutenant suggested, it could be at least a little bit help.
All right. Mr. Ray?
Do you think that helps on fourth?
Yes. But you're asking just for enforcement from the mortars, like you're buying it from Espina?
Yeah, the state trooper. And also perhaps the mail, the attorney general can do the mail.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Mr. Assol, you said, yes, yes, yes.
Absolutely.
All right, there you go. So that's a little move. So who's going to, somebody's going to put these things together for us?
Yeah. I'll work with Mr. Felty.
And you're going to move it as well, right? So we have it?
Did you, did you make a motion?
Well, that's, no.
You did the poll.
I did the poll. All right. So we need, move by Mr. President?
Yep.
Second, I was going to say, I'll favor say aye.
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 All right. I'll call that, is that okay? Okay, I'll call that, if you want to do separately. So first one for the letter to the county.
Yeah, I'll move that.
And second by John, I'll favor say aye. And the second one?
I'll move that.
To the state elected officials. All right. So...
Oh, second, sorry.
I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for talking.
Anything else for public safety that we're going to talk about?
I move adjourned.
Second.
Just a quick comment while we're still adding to public safety or not, but we had the horrendous storm Friday. I just want to publicly thank all of our departments right now, everybody who's really involved with that. It was funny because my daughter's running the pool and eight o'clock, she had to go down to Central Park to check on her pool and it was like, it was crazy. Of course, I texted the mayor, I said, I was like, "Gary, do you realize there's, all these trees are down in the park and I don't hear any crews?" And he says, "Go check by right at them, by Rose Garden." And I was like, "Oh, my God," it was like a war zone. It was absolutely dreadful. But our, all our folks, and again, thank you for your leadership there and everybody really worked hard at that. Just want, they did a great job for us and certainly has public safety.
They did a great job. There's still some work to do for them. You know, it's complicated.
Very good. Okay, I'm sorry. Anything else for public safety?
He's ready.
John, second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And I guess there is no claims. Well, so I need a motion to go into executive session for...
Oh, the sale of city property from city development planning. We were discussing, would be all topics, whether it should be an executive session or not Friday, put down as it was, but we're going to present that not in executive session or presentation. The question is, are we going to answer?
All right, so let's go back in the committee of city development planning. And this is not executive session, correct? So this is item number three, which is the sale of our city property update. And Rachel, you have this for us.
Okay. All right, sorry for the length of this report, but I'll try and give a summary of it as best I can. So the first three pages, just document the sales from January 1st of 2015 through the second quarter through June 30th of this year. So total of 116 sales totaling 2.3 million. And then year-to-date for 2016 alone, 678,000. Going into, does anybody have any questions on that?
Mr. Assol, this session, we know where that is? Is it in our package by chance? Or is it here? It's in the executive session. You're leaving?
Just a question, and just before you...
Sure.
When you say sole properties are all complete with new owner?
Yep.
We don't have anything pending?
These are closing, yep. The closing's already taken place.
Okay.
Okay. And in the next report, it's just a status of the sold properties that we've done in 2015. So this is the stuff that over a year has passed. We did a status on the first two quarters of 2015 and sold property. And what you're seeing there is just the address, the day it was sold, the owner, the status of rehabilitation, whether or not owner occupancy was required, so whether or not they told us they were going to live there or it was going to be an investment property, and then whether or not they're in compliance with the owner occupancy requirement.
And again, there's a lot of information in this report, so if people look at it and you have questions tomorrow, the next day...
Yeah, you can just email me.
You can call, call Rachel and we'll provide you with any additional details that you're looking for.
Sure.
Mr. President?
So we have 116 total sales, which it looks like the majority are in 2015 and we're in July, right? I'm just wondering, there's only 54 properties, 52 properties that are on the tracking report, which looks like it exceeds what's been sold.
We just did the first two quarters of 2015 on the tracking report because we have to give them a year to be in, to see where they're at with...
Right.
...the rehab.
And was 2015 the first year we, did we not sell anything in 2014?
We did, but we really got a lot stricter on what people were doing. You know, 2015 was really when we wanted to start really documenting everything. We sold a few things before that, but it wasn't as cohesive, I think, in terms of, this is when we started really with the database in 2015.
Okay. Because we've always had the requirement that people bring the house up to code in a year, or investment property, six months. So I would be interested in seeing what was sold prior to this and what, if they're in compliance or not. I just think it's important, yeah.
So then going, sorry, to the next piece, it's sale pending. So this is stuff that we have sold through, you know, we have basically passed through resolution and we haven't closed on it yet. A significant number of these are, have to do with living in Schenectady. Then the following document just basically explains the stuff that's not living in Schenectady, all the other pending sales, when they were passed and what we're waiting on. So like with, you know, 1235 Albion, this was passed a while ago. McDonald's is buying it, but they did environmental testing, they're doing a survey. It's just taking time because of us being corporate, you know, we're dealing with other factors here, not just a private sale.
And, I'm sorry. And like Van Vost was passed in September, but we can't get a hold of the buyer?
We haven't been able to reach them.
So when it, so when do we just say, "Okay, put it back out there"?
What we would do, and normally I would do, is just go there and try and find the person and see where we're at with it. Generally, we wouldn't let stuff go on more than six months, but that, you know, just pending, a lot of this, you know, there is some cleanup to do here, but just wanted to give an overall sense of where we were. The vacant lot stuff just tends to, because people just kind of put it, it's not in a, we don't have a formalized NLS contract with it, so, you know, it's basically just offered and it's kind of on the onus of them to follow up. You know, once it's passed, we do the title search and then hopefully hear from them to schedule the closing, you know? So it just comes, sums up, we have to find them and move forward. The next one, city-owned but not using legal issues. So this is stuff that we have to tie up where we had either title issues or other issues with it. And then the following document again explains where we were at. A lot of them were cleaned up in the most recent foreclosure that we did, that was the last day to redeem was the 24th. And what happens is we order a title report, a lot of times, you know, because of the volume, we're doing 400, you know, obviously a lot of people pay at the last second, but we can't wait for every, we can't wait for December 15th for people to us or a title report because it would push us all the way into the spring. So we order the title report in September. What happens is, we order them, we notify everybody that we get a title report on, but then in that window, sometimes they'll either the mortgage is re-sold to another, it's assigned, and that person doesn't get notified, or another lien is taken out against these people and the person isn't notified. So, you know, some of it, it's just, there's no way around it, you know, because of the...
Just the issue of the stress problem?
The volume, you know? So that, you know, that's really what comes up with this. And then, you know, it's on us to go kind of go back and fix it. The next one is available structures listed. So this is stuff that we have listed with realtors right now. And we're actually going to talk about a few of these tonight that we have offers on, but they're still considered, you know, they're pending, listed, listed and not pending. And then the next document is available structures that are not listed. A lot of these are, you know, potential demo candidates, stuff that we either have to, you know, find the right kind of person for it or that we really feel like the value, the cost of redehabilitated would be more than the value. Okay? So that's the available structure not listed. And then the next four or five pages is just available vacant lots. So as you can see, we have a lot of vacant lots. These are, you know, when we kind of have them broken out by unbuildable contiguous available, slivers. It's been a, you know, this has been a work in progress in itself. What we've done, and Jackie can speak a little more to this, is we've reached out to people that were adjacent owner occupants first, you know, in first phase, trying to get rid of some of these vacant lots. We like to, you know, get them back on the tactical consolidate with people that are living next door. Do you have any questions?
I have one question.
Sure.
The parking lot on Brandi One Avenue there.
Yes.
Who we saw, do you remember?
Yeah, can it last?
Are their contingency was for them to do the sidewalks?
Yeah.
It's been over two years now?
They're coming through the planning commission, so they have all their stuff in, yeah.
Very good. Because I drive by all the time and people just came and walk into sidewalks and they're actually walking on the streets over there.
Yeah.
Very good, that's good area. All right. I appreciate the call, I think it's very good. Again, really do some reading, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, if you have any questions, just email me or give me a call and I can, you know, talk to you about if there's certain properties that, you know, anything. Okay?
Very good. Good.
The other thing, because I know we're going to have these reports quarterly, but it would be really helpful for us as a council if a sale that we approve is, does end up not going through, that we at least know, that, you know, so if we could be alerted to that, that would be helpful. You know, like I know we sold 1719 Broadway, but it's not, it didn't have, like nothing's changed there. And I know it's listed actually.
Sure.
And then like 1788 Watts Street, I know there was a problem with that.
Yes, that one's on here, that one's on. I think with the, probably they just sell through, but we can do a report on, you know...
It'd just be helpful, because then it comes back around again and we're like, "Wait a minute," you know, like so...
Yeah, and what I'm trying to do now with the, with this, you know, with the property sales, is a document, if we've ever had another offer that fell through, you know, to give that to some of these, you know, coming again. So, but we can do that on the quarterly report and just let you know if something didn't transpire.
And I know this is a huge volume of work and you guys are dealing with a lot, but I think it's also important for us to keep track of what's going on. Okay.
All right, very good. Any other questions? Rachel, thank you very much for coming. Have a good evening.
You're kicking it off.
Yeah. We need a motion to go into executive session. So, second by Ms. Porterfield. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're now...